All right. I'd like to call this meeting of the USD four thirty seven Board of Education to order. First on the agenda is open forum, or is there any public comment tonight?
None tonight.
And then item three point oh one is roll call. Everyone is present except for Brian Smith. And then three point oh two.
And Brad Knoller.
Oh, and Brad Knoller, sorry. And then three point oh two, would like a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
And a motion in a second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero. We'll move on to section four, which is disposition of business by consent. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve a disposition of business by consent, including payment of bills and the amount of two million six hundred eighty eight thousand nine hundred twenty five dollars.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero. That brings us down to section five, which is administrative reports. First up is Tucker with the owner's representative report.
The number's almost over, right? Guys can have our kids back. So just gonna go through a brief, I don't have anything to put up, I've got some notes here. We'll be back potentially in August fourth, board meeting, really where we're at as we get into the school year. Washington Road North has been through its fire marshal walk in past. The last thing that we're waiting on is a certification of the retention ponds with the city. We have to do a survey of ASBIL to make sure everything matches up with the grades. There's always a little bit of things that change that need to be corrected, so they're correcting that and then we should have our full certificate of occupancy. Multipurpose building pad construction, it rained, so you're not gonna see anybody get on that pad for at least until it dries out, because if they get on it now, it's gonna tear it up and we'll just pay more money for them to fix it. So it's gonna be a waiting game on that. But the building is, we actually have the building, it's out there, ready to get stood up as soon as we get concrete geared out. WRMS, I went over there today, it looks really good. Tyler and that crew over there are really, have been getting after it all summer, I know they were concerned about it. But I saw that all the storefront was in for the new office and we're really down to carpet and some hallways and a lot of the finishing touches. But it looks, it looks pretty good, not really have any concerns there. Jay Schuyler's pretty similar, they've done a good job of even, they've had some congested areas or whatever, moving people around. And I really, I think a lot of the projects have done a good job of, of getting people in and working, even if the sequencing wasn't perfect. We had to do that at Farley. And so things are looking good at Jay Schuyler as well, Farley's looking great. I think there's, we're down to painting and some toilet accessories and some marker boards and some HVAC and electrical trim out. So that one has gone really well as well. The one issue that we're having is Indian Hills, is this the south addition, we talked about this a month ago. And they're pushing hard on it right now, it's scheduled, saying one to two weeks behind on the south addition. We've submitted the alternate plan to the fire marshal to be able to still open schools while renovations are all complete. We're gonna have to do some fire barriers at the libraries, the library is renovated in the existing space, but it has access to the new addition, so we gotta figure out what we're gonna do there. And then we're gonna, the two classrooms that are in the new addition is music and art. And so those need a little bit bigger rooms, while we have two collaboration spaces that we'll stick them in for a couple of weeks of school. And so we're still pushing as hard as we can, rain obviously doesn't help with trying to move around outside and that's kinda where they're starting to do some, try to do some stuff out back. But I, I know they're pushing on it, they had a ton of people there working. The renovations look good. And we're having meetings with them every week now on Indian Hills, just to make sure, and on all of them, that are going through renovations, just to make sure that we stay on top of things. Right now drawings are progressing on the remaining three schools. And then just like we do at the end of every summer, we'll do sort of a financial, you know, checkup, so to speak, on where we're at on contingencies and all that stuff, so that we know how to make decisions going into fall. And next, for next summer, and potentially follow-up projects in the summer of twenty seven. So it, we may still linger on some of those things, but we'll go through that this fall and next spring.
Any questions?
So Scott, remind me, when is the, when do teachers come back, particularly like at Indian Hills, when do, when are elementary schools?
Yeah, so the first contract day of the upcoming school year is Tuesday, August fifth. Now, having said that, there are times that some teachers may choose to come in a little bit early and to try to get some things set up. Now, the reality is, for the most part, even in the schools that are under construction right now, parts of the building will be open to be able to accommodate that. We'll just have to be really cautious about which way in which they can enter and which sections of the building they can get into. Well, we did have that conversation at the last meeting, last week.
And then students start?
On Tuesday, August twelfth, so one week after the teachers report back, yep.
So that is a month from tomorrow, thirty days.
Yep.
Everything else at Indian Hills, like the early childhood and all that, is on, doing well?
There's no reason why it shouldn't be able to be ready by then.
Anything else? All right, thanks Tucker.
Yep, guys in a couple of weeks.
And then after that is five point oh two, bus transportation updates.
Yeah, just like we did at the last board meeting, a few of us will take the lead on this. Still keeping it to three sections, communication, recruitment efforts, and then also safe routes to schools planning. In regards to communication, as it was stated at the last board meeting, so for those families that have been impacted by the change moving into twenty five, twenty six, we have communicated through US Mel, through multiple emails, through text, text messages. I don't know the official term, Patrick, robo-dial voice service. And then actually at the la, after the last board meeting on July eighth, about twenty of us just picked up the phone and started calling families that we have not yet heard from. And so at this point, since the making those calls, we have shifted from that process of communication to now the people, the families that have said, yes, we are going to participate in transportation, either two-way transportation at the elementary level or the one-way ride home transportation at the secondary level. And we now have shifted to collecting fees. And so July fifteenth was the initial date that we had established, and we had found that that was pretty early. And of the majority of folks that said yes, they had not paid by the fifteenth. And so we're continuing to communicate to that subset of families, we've extended the payment date to August first. And that has been communicated to them multiple times. Transportation Department knows that, they're still working towards routing all the yeses, even though the payment hasn't been paid yet. But that's a payment that will have to have incoming to us at some point, and that's the new date. So I wanted you to know that we wanted to work favorably with families, and so we thought it would be best to adjust the date. Now, that's the communication piece, we'll go back to any of these after we go through them all. Chelsea, recruitment efforts, we're thinking about our bus drivers and paras and crossing guards.
Yeah, so for bus drivers, we've had five applicants that are in, on the path to being hired, so we have good traction there. Good for a bus driver position and we'll probably see more. And then the para position has been kinda on fire, I think our principals have been spreading the word and whatnot, so. Lot of things there, you'll see the signage splashed in the normal places, the usual spots for now, and then we'll rotate it. So if you've been out in the community, you've probably seen some new messages out there and we'll continue to move those around. And crossing guards, our principals just came back this, today, so they will start to recruit and hire more directly. HR is kinda housed that for the time being and then they'll start to work on that this week.
And talking to a couple of principals last week, although they're not officially on board quite yet, they have been talking to current staff members that might be willing to pick up an extra hour or two for the position of crossing guard. Our hope is that some of our internal staff will choose to take that position. Chelsea, you posted the job some time ago, do we have any applicants in the system at the current time?
The last time I looked, there were five. So I think there are some that have applied directly and there are more conversations being had than that, so we'll see how it comes together.
Yep, as we switch over to rich and safe routes to schools, one thing I'll mention about crossing guards, it's possible to get a school year started in a specific building. We might start with like, say, two or three crossing guards, just to ensure that we're training kids to be able to utilize the crosswalks appropriately. And then over time, it's possible that maybe one of those can peel back and then they're just down from three to two, as an example. That was the outcome of the survey and as Rich has been communicating with those engineers, that might make sense. So we might start with a little bit of a higher number and then at the end of the year, by then we might have a little bit of a lower number. We'll just see how it goes, but of course student safety be the premium and that'll kinda drive those decisions. So Rich, in regards to safe routes to schools, there's a lot taking place in some of our schools, so maybe an overview of where we're at.
Sure. Indian Hills and Farley, we're adding sidewalks internally on our property, connecting to the city, county sidewalks that are already there. We've gotten our permit in to the county, discovered when we did that, that one of the crossing areas that was recommended was within the city limits, so we're now working on that permit with the city. Initially, we didn't think we were gonna have to do anything with the city, cause it was just Wanamaker, but one of the crossings at Indian Hills falls in the city limits. So the one that's recommended at twenty sixth and Indian Hills, that's one we'll have to work with the city on. We have contractor in place, it's the contractor that the city and county use, recommended to us, so we have that. We, the county has agreed to put some sidewalks in at the Pauline South and kinda help us out over in that area, getting those lined out, even though we, we're not changing transportation a lot in that area, they're, they still found some areas that were unsafe for students, so we're working on that so that we've got safe routes everywhere. We've got bike racks in at, or not bike racks, the pads are in, bike racks have been ordered for all the schools that are going to have that. Working on a proposal right now for the high school to add a walking path from Wanamaker up by the soccer field that connects that sidewalk for middle school students to be, because right now there's no way for middle school to get down there. So we're working on that. Everything's going along, we've got signage ordered, we have a little bit more of that to order, we're kinda waiting on some timeframes on some of the signs, but we've got that going and that same contractor will put those signs in for the county and the townships where they go. So I think it's all going pretty well. We've worked with the principals on, especially Farley, that was, they had a great idea, the building had a great idea over there. We've got, we're changing the parking lot around a little bit so that they can get three lanes of cars in and keep them off the street, cause that was a big concern for everybody, was getting cars in off the street. But we think with the change in the parking lot, taking out one of the islands and making that loop a little wider, we think we've got that figured out. And if we don't, we still have the overflow lot that we could put cars in if we needed to. So I'm feeling really good about the infrastructure piece and how it's going. It'll just be if our contractor can get everything put in in time. We've asked that they prioritize the R R F Bs, the lighted crosswalks, those will be the priority. The bases are already in for the ones in Auburn and we're just waiting on the county to hear back on that, but that should be in the next day or two. We, we had submitted a permit, they came back to us about twenty sixth street, so we had to resubmit. And we met with them at Indian Hills and they said it wouldn't be a problem, they're, they're good with that. We are going to have to tie in a couple of ramps that they're, they recommended, but they're small. It's just small areas that we'll get a contractor out on and get that tied in to the, to the street, the curbing on the streets, so.
As a friendly reminder to everyone, we're still not suggesting or recommending walkers or bike riders to Schuyler and Wanamaker. And although transportation will be status quo at south and central, because of the survey, we're just adding some safety features.
Any other questions, comments?
So Rich, when, when do you anticipate having kinda routing? I know you're.
Good question, they thought that they would be close within two weeks of the fifteenth, so by the end of July for sure. We, we think we'll have it close and we'll have the stops figured out. Which will tie closely with August first date, we'll, we'll know for sure then who's paying and everything, but right, like Dr. McWilliams said, we're routing everybody that said yes currently. So we'll have, have space and have the routes figured out.
So what, do you know roughly total number of students transported this year compared to last year, what that kinda looks like?
I didn't get a total number on that, of the, of the thirteen hundred that could, fifty, I think it was fifty-five percent said yes. So last year we transported forty-three hundred daily, so three thousand, so probably somewhere around thirty-five hundred, just quickly figuring that.
No, perfect.
Yeah, it, the, it's kind of interesting, so when we started communicating with families impacted by the change, initially the yes, I wanna ride percentage of those responded was pretty high and it started off right around seventy percent. And then it just started dropping every week thereafter. And so there may still be a family that has, that have not yet confirmed a decision, I may still reach out and say, hey, is it too late? And we'll do everything we can to be accommodating, but again, kinda the new deadline is the, the first of August. And so it has trended down too, it's been right at, I think it was fifty-six percent the last time I looked, which was a week ago, so, yeah.
All right, anything else? All right, if not, we'll move on to section six, which is items for discussion. First up is Dr. De Soto with the needs assessment, six point oh one.
You can close the laptop there.
Done, okay. All right, well, good evening, so as promised, I'm back for the second meeting to talk about our needs assessment. So if you recall, the last time when we discussed this, we talked about the highly collaborative nature of the needs assessment, all of the input that we collected and gathered, and the KISA process that has led us to where we're at now. And again, we talked about the three goals of a continuous improvement system, that it's meaningful, that it really moves us all forward collectively, that it's aligned so that our efforts are efficient while also being effective, and most importantly, that it's school focused, because the best efforts in terms of school improvement happen in the buildings and the building level and the classroom level, not from the district level. So I shared this with you last time, so this is the KISA framework. And what they have us do in the process is identify a fundamental from four. So structured literacy, standards alignment, balanced assessment, and quality instruction are four areas that KSCE is really focusing on all across the state. And so we had to select one of the four fundamentals based on where we thought we were in this process, both in terms of our current work, but also our future efforts. And then we had to select two of the structures and there are certain lead indicators and measures of progress that go with that. So again, through a lot of dialogue with the guiding coalition, with the group that went to Green Bush and data analysis and looking at where we're at in our PLC planning, we landed on professional learning and professional collaboration. Professional collaboration, really thinking about the PLC process and how that is the heart of what we do, professional learning, and then that, and that being a guaranteed and viable way for us to partner with teachers and make sure that, that they have the resources and skills they need. So from there, then, each building is developing a blueprint. And this blueprint, I, I joke a lot about this, I love a good acronym or a good initialism and I kinda beat them to death and my team gets tired of it after a while, but I actually think this is really important to think about. It's a building level unified effort plan. So from the district, we might be focusing on standards alignment through these structures, but the real magic of the plan happens in what the buildings choose to do with it. So from a district perspective, we selected a fundamental and we have to pick one that we work on as a district, that is part, a required part of the KISA process. And so through dialogue and discussion and picking professional learning and professional collaboration, what we had to do for KISA was identify specific actions that the district would take and lead others through, and metrics that go with those actions and report that to the state. So as a reminder, for this school year, our compliance for KISA is to develop a plan and then to implement the plan. So as long as we do what we set out to do, we will have met the compliance component of this. And so in summary, what this says is that, that we as a district are going to provide meaningful professional learning on standards and common assessments, and that in six months, we will have completed forty percent of that and by the end of the year, we will have completed a hundred percent of that. We have gathered feedback from the field in terms of professional learning needs assessments and teachers have prioritized areas within this that they would like to see us work. And as we develop our choice sessions for September and for November and for April, they will see the results of that. They will also have collaboration and goal setting on the upcoming August Professional Learning Day. And we'll set the table with this more also back to school in August. But our PD plan will account for what the standards-aligned grading look like, what does common quality assessment look like, how do we communicate progress to students and families, and what does that look like? All right, so the second part of this then is professional collaboration. So we, we selected a second structure and we have two different sets of actions and metrics for this one. So the first one is about making sure that we have quality common assessment all across the board. So we will provide tools for PLCs to engage with their existing common assessments, or maybe some areas might want new common assessments, but having common quality attributes that we use for. And then they are, then PLCs are supported with those tools through instructional facilitators, through professional collaboration in their PLCs. We give them the tools and then they're able to engage. And a lot of PLCs already have high-quality common assessment, so it's a matter of looking at what they're doing and go, yeah, we feel really comfortable about this and we make minimal changes. And some might want more support from us and we can provide that to them as necessary, but we're looking at a common level of quality within the elementary level and then within the secondary level. We have two separate metrics that we're looking for with elementary and secondary, because they rely on common assessments in different ways. The secondary level, they're very much driven by PLCs. At the elementary level, they want more uniformity and so they're more district design. Then the second part of this then is about using data. So have you ever heard of the phrase data-rich, information-poor? You have a lot of data to look at, but it doesn't always mean a whole lot? Well, that happens within education too, and so we want to be able to provide tools and resources for PLCs to be able to tell student learning stories with their data. So you've got high levels of data like Kansas Assessment or ACT or the MAP Assessment. How do you then marry that with your common assessments in your classroom? How do you look at the day-to-day ongoing formative assessment and, and have good quality conversations about student learning in a way that doesn't bury you in the data? We've had a lot of work with dashboards over the recent months and we're excited to roll that out with teachers and that will be part of this. But really establishing some standards for what data discussion looks like, but more importantly, tools that people can turn around and use. And so by the end of this first year, PLCs will have collectively gone through one cycle with their instructional facilitators based on those structures and resources. So those are the district-level plans and what's beautiful about blueprints is those are things we're working on as a district system, but buildings have a lot of freedom within form. So each building then is asked to, to look at these goals and think about, okay, where are we at in our school? And what might we want to do in terms of standards alignment and professional learning? Or standards alignment and professional collaboration? And outline their plans. What we're asking for here are outlines, we don't want big, long narratives, we just want, here are some initiatives, here's some data we might look at, here are some resources that we might need from the district in order to be able to pull this off. And, and buildings are working on these over the summer and as soon as school is about to start, we will then collect these. And in a later August meeting, we will bring them to you for your review and approval, because they are part of the needs assessment. And so we're excited that the buildings have a lot of control over this. The other part of this too is that we don't want our building partners to be alone, so we've got built-in collaboration times and review times with learning services through our learning partnership meetings twice a year to engage in, in dialogue around the plan, how are things going, how can we support? What do you need from us to be able to bring this across the finish line? It's our first year in this process, we think it will go well, we're excited to try it out and I think it will be a net positive. We'll share our goals with the teachers at Back to School PD. For your review is the professional learning plan that's in here. I won't go through this, every single piece of what is in here. I do want to just show you a couple of key points though in this. So back to school, on August fifth, we'll have convocation, we'll have some specific training for ELA teachers in particular with their new resources, but we have a lot of time built in for PLCs to collaborate. This will all be structured and focused and reflective on where are you at and where do you want to go. And then on the seventh, then we'll start talking specifically about the goals that I just walked through with you. So we're on year two of our PLC plan, we're talking about assessment and. We're talking about assessment and data and analytics. We'll focus on that, and we'll have PLCs engage in goal setting around those topics. So we're excited about that. As we get closer to September, I'll tell you more about September PD. But just so you know, we have a whole PD outline in here. And hopefully what you'll see as you take some time to read through this is an alignment between our KISA planning process and needs assessment and the PD plan that you have in front of you. So just the highlights that I wanted to briefly share with that. So still ahead, at a future board meeting, I will share with you some school-based building blueprints. And you'll have an opportunity to see their needs and their goals aligned with this. We'll provide an overview of the data that got us to where we're at now, and then talk about next steps in implementation. Have any questions for me?
So Jeff, on the, and you probably said this last time, but I slept since then and I probably forgot.
That is okay. I throw a lot at you when I talk about this.
On the, when we talk about fundamentals and structures, is that a process that you go through every year and pick a new fundamental and a new structure? Or is this a multi-year building on what we do this year, staying within that?
Great question. So as part of the new KSCE KISA model, every year we could, if we so chose to, pick a new fundamental and a new structure. So for this year, we picked standards alignment because we had started the standards alignment pieces last year, knowing this was coming. So that's why we intentionally did the Mastery Ten work, the instructional bundles that were supportive of that, because we knew that we needed some more universal clarity in that process because of this. And it also was able to be a good springboard for our assessment work this year. And so we knew that this was coming. We didn't know exactly what it would look like. But the goal was to stay with another standard or that standards the same year moving forward. Now, next year, it's possible, as we talk about tiers of student learning and tiered support. We may or may not say with standards alignment. You know, if we have really good clarity about where we're at, and we feel like our assessment and data systems are good, and we feel like teachers have high-quality instructional resources, and we might want to think about quality instruction and tiered systems of support, we might go that direction. But it's nice because the, the team, the guiding coalition can really look at the data, look at our efforts in the plan and go, we want to stay with what we're doing or we want to make a change.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Jeff, was this driven by legislation or the legislature? Was this something that KSCE derived?
Great question. So you can see some alignment between legislative priorities, especially when you start looking at things like structured literacy. But really, this plan has emerged out of KSCE reflecting on their accreditation process and trying to make it as user-friendly for possible, or as possible for schools. My own personal opinion, I applaud them for that because a lot of this is just high-quality teaching. So we're really focusing on what's important and how we can move the system forward on some pretty straightforward areas of improvement, I guess, the fundamentals.
All right, any other comments? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to six point oh two, which is cardiac emergency response plan.
Yeah, so at the last board meeting, we presented board policy EBBG, which was the first, first stage of this particular process. We shared at the last board meeting that there are two things that need to be in place for this upcoming two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. One is to have a board policy in regards to cardiac emergency response. The second one is to have a plan to make that operational. And so the plan was put together on behalf of the emergency operations team, as well as our school nurses, working collaboratively together. All of our principals are back this week. And later in the week, when we all come together and have a back-to-school meeting, we'll be going through the plan. And we also will do a tabletop exercise to kind of make that operational moving into this upcoming school year. So we're bringing this plan to you tonight as well. It'll surface later in the agenda. We've got the board policy that we had talked about at the last board meeting. We've got the plan. Once it's board approved, we are in compliance with the law that will be in play for this upcoming two thousand, or yeah, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year, which makes us compliant. Most importantly, it also keeps us all safe. Hopefully, this is a plan and a policy that we'll never have to implement. But if we do, we absolutely want to make sure that plans are in place and teachers or those that will be a part of this plan responsible for implementation know exactly what to do.
Questions or comments? All right, if not, we'll move on to six point oh three, which is board policy updates, first read.
Yeah, so we can think KASB Legal Counsel here. It's summertime, and so they have sent a new wave of board policy updates. None of the five that you see here are substantial. There are minor tweaks. One, elimination of a policy because it can be embedded within another. Anytime there's a board policy recommendation that is of significance, we will stop and we'll just have one. We won't do, do that as a batch, and we'll actually dig into it. But these are minor tweaks, and they just streamline the current policies that we have in place. I really don't have too much to add on any of these five.
Any questions or concerns? All right, that brings us to the end of items for discussion. We'll move on to section seven, which is action items. The first thing on that is seven point oh one, which is board policy EBBG, final read. And we just talked a little bit about that as, with the policies. So if there's not any discussion, it entertain a motion.
I would, let me find it here. I thought I had it. Would move that the Board of Education approve the cardiac emergency response plan as presented.
So it's been a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes five to zero.
I did seven oh two, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Supposed to do, yeah.
So we just passed seven oh two. Is there, is there a, a motion for the actual policy then, seven point oh one?
I would move that the Board of Education approve board policy EBBG as presented.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes five to zero. And we're to seven point oh three, which is Washburn Rule High School Athletics, final read.
I'll move the Board of Education approve athletic apparel and equipment vendor BSN Sports.
It's been a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes five to zero. We're on to section eight, which is communications.
None this evening.
All right, and we, the chair would now move that we go into executive session at seven oh five PM to discuss students pursuant to the exception relating to the actions adversely or favorably affecting a student under coma, personnel matters pursuant to the exception of non-elected personnel under coma, and to discuss budget pursuant to the exception for employer employee, employee negotiations under coma for twenty minutes. The open meeting will resume in the boardroom at seven twenty-five PM.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes five to zero. We are in executive session. Motion passes five to zero. We are in Executive Session.